Yes, yeah. Good evening, Oriole Nation. We're gonna get started right now. This is Dr. Mino. Welcome.
I will call to order the July Briggler Board Meeting of the Department of Education, School District of North Fond du Lac. Roll call.
Matthew. Hack.
Here.
Kobazki here. Gekerman.
Here.
Yager.
Here.
We have a quorum. The next item is reported on public notice.
Public notices were mailed to the Fond du Lac reporter, radio station KFIZ 107.1, the hall, WFDL radio, and the agenda was posted at the entrance doors of the district office, Friendship Learn Center, Bessie Allen Middle School, Horace Mann High School, Spelman Library, and the municipal building on Friday, July 22nd, 2022.
Next item, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the great soul with liberty, and justice for all. Okay. Any board members sharing school moment of pride? You want to start this side?
Sure, I'll do both. Yeah. So mine was for Coach Keel and Coach Wolf. I saw a lot of pictures, plus had some of my kids at some of their camps this last couple of weeks. And, you know, two things. One, it was pretty cool to see the upperclassmen really doing that mentoring piece for the younger classmen or the youth, along with just the turnout. I mean, I don't think we've seen that much turnout in either camp in quite some towns, so it was really exciting that the group was engaged and they got some activity this summer. So, that's fine.
Mine was actually gonna be about Coach Wolf with the football program and all that he has, you know, really trying to get the whole hype and excitement up there and very, excuse me, informative as far as what he's getting out to the parents and the kids and so. Just hope and pray that all those kids go out and we got something. We'll see.
Mine, I guess, did feel a little quiet for me for the summer as far as coming in or events or that, so I just want just real brief about the transition between our former superintendent and our current superintendent. Matt and Aaron have both been very positive, independent of each other. They both told me how much they appreciated the help they were getting from each other. So I would expect nothing less than that, with everybody being professional, but it was just so great to hear how smooth this was going, so.
I'm actually gonna jump on the coaches bandwagon, too. There's just so much going on this summer between all the coaches running, you know, the running clubs in the morning, the open gyms where the kids can play basketball, there's a couple of boys and girls basketball camps, the football camps, so. And then, you know, outside of the district a little bit, but the Little League program with all the parents helping the coach both baseball and softball. Just a lot of community involvement, and I really give the coaches and their assistants a lot of credit during the summer to keep these kids active, so it's much appreciated.
So event-wise, I guess I haven't been to a lot of things in the last month or so with summer going on, but I just wanted to give a shout out to our administrative staff here, the maintenance staff, janitorial staff, just for being out and getting schools, all of our schools ready to go for the fall, just around the corner, so I appreciate that. All hard work.
Alright. Very nice. Item F, approval of minutes. Board members were supplied with minutes at previous meeting, and wondering if there's any changes or corrections noted by members. If none, then the minutes will stand approved as printed. Okay, and item G, treasures report.
Cash balance on hand at the end of the month was eighty-three thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and seventy cents. The receipts for the month were a hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Transfer from investment accounts, two point two five million. Transfer from the capital projects fund, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty cents for a total receipt of two million, five hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. Expenditures for the month were two million, eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. So the cash balance on hand for, as of July 25th, was four hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. Bills recommended for payment are one million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirty-seven, two hundred and ten thousand dollars and eight cents. And that's made up of pre-approved checks of one million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty cents, and board meeting checks of two hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-eight cents.
Alright. Any questions about the bills? If none, I entertain a motion to approve the list of bills. And then roll call.
Matt, did you do that, or did you? Matthew?
Yes.
Gekerman?
Yes.
Hack?
Yes.
Kobazki, yes. Yager?
Yes.
Okay, next item is the clerk's report.
Don't have any correspondence, but we do have one donation. All Tools NDT Inspection Service LLC, a thousand dollars for Backpack Buddies. Thank you very much for that.
Can I just ask, is there a connection with the company to anybody or the district?
I'm not really sure who they are, but they donate it every year. I'll look into that, because I'm like, I was wondering who that was. I bet when I hear the name, it's somebody that I know. But they've been very active. I think maybe they've been helping with Backpack Buddies quite a bit.
Great. Alright, and then the next item is item I, the citizens' comments. I'll open the floor if there's any comments from citizens. Okay, hearing none, I'll close that item on the agenda and move on to item J, the superintendent's report.
So Aaron and I are gonna tag team a little bit here, as I'm transitioning, as Steve was indicating, and I just want to start out saying, you know, the transition has been amazing, and I'm gonna just give a lot of kudos to Aaron, as well as our staff here. Everybody's just been so welcoming. It's been great to sit down and meet with several people since that last time, but really excited to be here and as we move forward, you know, look forward to the opportunity with our district, so. With that being said, just, we're gonna walk through updates on the referendum process itself. We had a chance to meet certain folks for a little bit, and I don't know if Aaron wanna kick this off and then we'll go into it?
So last time, the facilities group along with the board talked about the survey. And as you can see, we went together, talked, met with our team, and really focused on the idea of capacity, because that's where we see our needs at, the middle school and the high school. We also know at the middle school, when it's refurbished, it still remained that kind of that, like a big, or big snowman, if you look at how it's all structured. So we really know those are where the needs are. And so what we did, and we also saw that there was interest in improving our athletic complex, but not to use referendum money. You know, later in the future, if there's some sources that can do that, we saw that was very clear, that that was something that should be looked at there. We also saw that there's support for an operational referendum, non-recurring over three years. So what we did is working with our, with school perceptions, grade, along with CDC, sat down, looked at Dave, and was also at the table, looked down at like, what can we do? Because we also know interest rates are growing. So what we were gonna borrow before might even be more of an impact on taxpayers. So really what it came down to is focusing on the idea of capacity. We were excluding, in our report to you, is excluding any of the Oriole Athletic Complex work at this time. Elimination of HVAC chillers, which is air conditioning. We have window evens at ELC, but that's probably one element that's not, it's a pretty, it's a block, not so much a need in some senses, so that saves eight hundred thousand dollars there. BAM's cafeteria, for those of you who know that the BAM was a high school gym, so there's that auditorium with the raising stage refurbishing that, so it's just a larger area. So we'll just put a hold on that right now, so that was over four hundred and thirty thousand. And then the greenhouse at the high school is, once again, a block. It'd be very nice to have, but right now, looking at where we're at, that would save about two hundred thousand. So all in all, this would bring down the capital improvements to eighteen point five million dollars. And then, so what the recommendation is to look at this, have some comments from the school board members, but then we also worked with Corals and Brady's. And when you do that referendum, there's so many different groups that work with us. And Corals and Brady's is a group that allows us to do bonding, and they help us with the referendum questions, and so you can see here that the recommended referendum questions would be to allow for eight hundred thousand dollars per year for three years, now reoccurring for operation costs. And then the second one is to be allowed eighteen point five million dollars for the purpose of paying the cost of school buildings. And then it explains infrastructure and additions at Bessie Allen, construction of additions, classrooms, cafeteria, physical education space renovations, improvement at Horace Mann, renovations, building infrastructure, mover of older, the biggest thing would be at FL or ELC, remove that older building, safety improvements, early learning center, and just very minimal things at Treford Way, and then the fixtures and equipment necessary to do those. Working then with Baird, what that would do then is it would take, and we were at ninety-two cents before, so that would take, it dropped it to eighty-eight cents. So we're looking at the property impact on a two hundred thousand dollar home, fourteen dollars and sixty cents a month, or sixty-seven, a hundred and seventy-six dollars a year. These numbers are also a little bit not accurate, because we just found out that we're getting a little bit more state aid also. That we're predicted to get about five hundred thousand dollars more in state aid. Now, our aid is around fourteen million dollars, so that will also have an impact. We also haven't figured in the TID, that's retired now with Agnesian and Aurora, so that's gonna be coming back on the rolls, which will help, we're not gonna get more money as a school, but alleviates and adds more revenue, so there's, it's spread a little bit more, and everybody should see a little of a tax negative impact. So really, you know, working with the group, kinda thought that this is something that would be a, you know, and everything here, you see the conceptual budget, you see the additions and what those look like. Really what it is, is listening to what the community said. We know that we do have definite need for expansion. We know that there's definitely, and Horace Mann has been upped, done at Bessie Allen, too. Bessie Allen's still an older building. Horace Mann is, you know, referendum nineteen ninety-nine it was built, so seeing some years and some things to add on specifically. Built for four hundred and sixty students. We're already at four sixty-seven, and that's looking to go up even higher the next few years. So the next page is suggested referendum timeline, and on there you can see specific dates of developing and Matt has already set up with the team, looking and talking with CD Smith and Bray, that they would help with educational promotional materials, when those would be, what they would look like, still do some mailings, all those types of things. So I guess what we present right here and working with Matt and the team too, as Matt goes through and the board goes through exploring this referendum, which the recommendation would be to have a special meeting. Probably would be, I think, what I put on there, August twenty, before the fifteenth. Because you have to set the, hey, Mike, you have to set the, you have to set it seventy-five days before the election date. So the fifteenth would be about seventy-eight, I calculated accurate. And I also think, talking with Matt, how we did the last referendum, it's very important that that's what's on there, and people have the opportunity to really clearly talk about that, see what it is. And then once that is set, then comes education, going to the different municipalities, the different community groups, and explaining what it is and how it looks.
I think the other thing too is adding, you know, getting onto our staff and really sharing, you know, the information, because they haven't seen everything yet, just so that they're clear and they understand, because their story is very important for the impact of where we're at with this. So that'll be in addition to meeting with all the groups that we have here on the docket. That would be, you know, obviously would be part of it too, and that, bringing people back later.
Dave, did you have anything from the conversation? You guys pretty much covered it. Any questions from the board, or I'll answer?
Go ahead. Just a common question. So, thank you. Really nice job on cutting some of the costs based on the feedback and not impacting capacity, which is great, because that's the primary focus. Do we know by, is it still the same amount of classrooms for Horace Mann? Like, was it six?
Yes.
Okay. And do we know what that grows our capacity to?
I figure about twenty-five per room. So if you look at, so six times twenty-five, one fifty.
Okay. So around six hundred, yeah, okay.
Yeah. There should be more, that should be a plus. Plus, it allows it to spread out a little more, because we're using some of Horace, or Bessie Allen for some of the Horace Mann stuff. And another thing, it adds a bathroom that, and anybody who's been in the building knows that, there is no bathroom at the academic wing either. And if you were, you guys were talking about athletics earlier. With the participation, the more that we have and want to have, that way it was pretty small. So just expanding that a little bit, and also the area up top for capacity working out, is gonna be a big plus for our students also.
Do we know when we're gonna have, like, the first pass of the educational packet put together?
Providing staff or is that?
Well, I guess, I'd like, when will the board get a look at the educational packet, I guess is the question.
I guess, what kind of, what are you talking about, as far as educational?
We're gonna go, it's talking about putting a website out.
Oh.
The paper materials, and I'm assuming you're gonna have like a PowerPoint when you go out to these organizations.
And that comes back to, I think, the fifteenth, then.
Yeah, so here's, yeah, so the timeline on that would be, you know, get the referendum question set, and then from now through August, get all that information done. As Matt said, sharing with the staff at the beginning on the twenty-second of August, also then having some information, working with CD Smith and Bray to have some posters, or some things that are at the welcome back night. So I would anticipate there'd be a lot of things already set by the twenty-second board meeting.
I know we're also meeting with CD Smith and all those individuals in the fifth. We're looking to do that, just to get that ready as well, so walking through all those educational materials and what that look like will be on that date.
Okay. It'll be important to have the story for the twenty-second.
Absolutely.
Mentioning the capacity change at the high school, what are the new additions on the Bessie Allen add to the capacity add?
Alright, so here with Bessie Allen, so the total number of additional rooms would be, if you look at this, one thing it does is it adds a larger size for each grade, seventh and eighth grade have one, but sixth grade doesn't. But it also adds four new rooms in that area, so that would be another hundred students. And then what it does also is it moves some of our, some of our ID or intellectual disability students over in this area, which that opens up some more space here. So we're looking at increasing the capacity for students, probably about a hundred and fifty there also.
And everybody's comfortable that that's good for X number, what's the number of years that we have a projection, or are we just saying we're good with that?
I don't know if we would, I would say right now that allows both for eighty to a hundred students at both levels at least, and sans a lot of building out here, we already know what our capacity is, so we can control open enrollment. So I feel confident, if something happens and we see significant growth in building in different areas, then we're gonna see some, we're gonna see increase in revenue also, we're gonna need to do what we have to do. But I feel comfortable with what this is right now, and it's not too much, but it's not second short. So as John had said, we hadn't changed any of the capacity or any of the floor plan size, it's just when they have the greenhouse and just changing some stuff in the cafeteria, but still adding the classroom space necessary. I think they kind of equalize what we're feeding from here.
And also, as I read it, you adjusted the percent or rate that we would get to, right?
Yes, so.
So that's included in the.
Yeah, so what happened, that's a good point there, Jen. So if you'll see here, right now, they're looking at saying four point five to four point seven five percent, before we're looking at four point two five to four point five. Now, understand also with the tenure retiring, how much we get in state aid, what those interest rates look like, what we get for cost of bonding when that would all happen. That number is, that's a conservative number, so I wouldn't see it going any more than eighty-eight cents, and very well could be less than that. But for, from a conservative standpoint, we also talked to CD Smith and said, hey, I don't know if you know this, but gas prices are up, inflation, you might have a bear market. Are you still comfortable with these costs for construction? They were very comfortable with that. Projecting out, if the referendum passes, then going out to bid for building would happen this spring, and building would start, we'd be in the building phase right now, next year.
With the TID going out, we do benefit from that eventually, because the taxes they're paying to the TID right now will go back, revert back to just regular taxes, and we'll get the school portion of that.
I can't imagine it's gonna get back to us either, Mike. Do you guys know?
I know what the village's portion is. I think it might be a couple hundred thousand for the village.
Okay.
I'm not sure what it is, but you guys are, ten, we're buying something, so maybe that's all we're, I'm throwing it out there.
And so what we love is around four point seven to five million, when we look at, because we're eating about seventy-five percent from the state, so that could equal a couple mills.
Okay.
By the way, now we have couples, board members from the village. And we'll school board number two.
Alright. Any other questions, Ben? Good. Then next on the docket is sharing updates on the budget from twenty-one, twenty-two, and early forecast of twenty-two, twenty-three. I'm gonna have Aaron, you know, walk through this again, just having worked on this for a while and just learning as I'm going here as well. So Aaron, yours too.
You know, this is, as we started going, Maria based her, what we were gonna get in revenue based on the year before. And we got, in the spring, we got a lot more than we did the year before, as you could see in the, with our high-cost special ed, our reimbursement for Medicare, Medicaid. So we found that, we're trying, you know, budgeting for schools is like nailing jello to a wall. And we always want to come in with, hey, this is what, we set our budget, what we believe we need in order to educate our kids and meet our needs of our district. A lot of times that comes in, and we'll say, hey, we could be at a couple hundred thousand dollar or this. You know, right now, we're looking at, last year we started one point four, but when we passed the budget in in October, remember when we passed that budget? For the year, we've already been five months into our year, before we even get to pass a budget, so we have to function on that. So really, I'm really proud of the work that we did and how we look for aid. We looked at transfer services, so if we get a special education student that's higher cost, or maybe some students that English language is their second language, we can get more revenue for those students also. So we really look to get, to really maximize the revenue that we can get. And by doing that, along with doing what we could to save money, we were able to break about even this year, which is great. That gets us to about nineteen point five, twenty percent, which is our fund balance policy. So really proud about that. We are able to do the increases. I remember in November, we talked about that, but we said it's the right thing to do, so we did that. Looking at next year, we have a projected one point one million shortfall. Now, that won't be like that in November, in October. Once we get all the numbers and stuff, I'm guessing that's gonna be closer to seven or eight. That's where that operational referendum of eight hundred thousand dollars come in. Now, understand, there's a couple of things that we don't know. Number one, we have ten percent for healthcare. We're really working hard on that self-funding, and what that looks like, we got some really good initial numbers, so I think there could be some savings there. Maria always goes flat enrollment. We don't want to anticipate things. I mean, we think we're gonna get higher enrollment, but we don't want to count the students until we know they're in the seats. We're also looking at, currently, remember, we're in the second year of annual budget, so there is no new money that the state's putting in for students. They said use that Esther money. And I could tell you from a standpoint, we are in great shape, because we did not use Esther money to backfill anything. The only thing we have is two staff members that cost one hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we can make a decision. If we can't afford that, that was Esther money, but I think that we've been doing really well on that. And then we looked at a five point six increase in transportation, which is locked in. And then Maria also put maximum retiree HRA utilization. We had, I believe, five people retire this year. So we haven't had that much utilization, so she's just saying, hey, everybody's gonna use what they have allocated. And we don't think that's gonna happen. So when we see this, I think we're gonna be in better shape, but it's gonna be around that eight hundred thousand dollars, and that's where that operational referendum comes into. So the good, the good news is, is we're doing really well this year. We're about even, maybe a little bit of a surplus, and if we have, I'm talking under a hundred thousand dollars on a, you know, a twenty-seven million dollar budget, when you take all of our grants, and you take federal money and all that. So that money, whatever we have as a surplus would be put back into the fund balance to help get that up. Because remember, our fund balance hasn't gone down, but the percentage has, because our fund tenor operation budget has gone up, so that percentage has gone down. So overall, next week is when the audit starts, and that's when we're gonna get all this stuff clarified, so come, Matt will give you an update probably early August, you'll have a more firm number of what that looks like. And then I wouldn't anticipate really any big updates, what the budget looks like, until we get that third Friday, count of our students. And then we get some more information about how much aid that we're gonna get, that gets solidified, which has no impact on how much money we have. It's just where the money is coming from. And then we'll also know a little bit about other aids or other payments coming at that time. So overall, I'm really, I'm, you know, talking with Matt, one of the things that I'm really excited about our district too is, we're in really good shape. There's so many unknowns, and the state's sitting on some big money in the rainy day fund. Don't know what's gonna happen with that come next year. Also, we don't know who's gonna be the governor. I can, I think the Senate and the Assembly are gonna stay Republican. I think that's gonna be in our lifetime for a while, but we don't know who the governor is. All of the Assembly and the Senate said that they will give more money to schools in the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. Not that I don't trust people, but I tend not to think that politicians back two years ago are gonna be the same ones making those decisions two years after. So there's a lot of, I have a lot of optimism about funding and what it could look like. But right now, there's no real, like, if you'd say birds in the hand. But right now, I think with that operational referendum, knowing that that will really stabilize things moving forward, the job is to work, to not need that, pass those three years. You know, Matt and colleagues advocating, talk about public education, what we have with saving money with our insurance, increased revenue from enrollment, I think there's a lot of good upside. So right now, still grinding it out, and we're really proud of bringing in the team for how we were gonna do this year, and then to keep that momentum and working on it next year.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, any questions in the conference room?
I always gotta say something. I guess being new to the board, I need some education on the budget, so I don't know how you wanna do that, Matt. I just want me to sit with Maria and go through it, or with the other new members, wanna learn more if we have a more formal session. But I think in order for me to be effective, when people ask questions, I need to understand more than I do right now. And I think building the budget, it's a good time to kind of get in on the ground floor of this next budget, so I'll leave it up to you on how you wanna do that, but I need several hours, I'm guessing, on education, so I really understand that.
I think the WASB does some type of outreach stuff with that too, which might be just one option. I don't know, locally, it's fine too. But it is complicated, school finance in totality is. We're always looking at a study committee to try to come up with a new way of financing schools, and it just kinda stays the same, and ideas are like, well, I don't know if that's any better than what we have, so.
Yeah, I'm not advocating that I could probably change the process. I just don't understand.
And I think we need to just figure out, like, what does that look like, Rick, and if it means sitting down with Maria, and, you know, several people just getting together and like, seeing a little bit more of that, more in depth, and I guess what we can.
Maria also was trained, I don't know if you remember, maybe it was seven, eight years ago, where she had, it was like that business game. It was like, you get around, it was like about two, three hours. And it kind of showed, kind of like in a, you know, that's a game of life type of thing, where you sat down, you could see where all the different funds come from, how it all works. I don't know if that's on a date, but that's something, talk with Maria, that could be very helpful to kind of, instead of just reading and explaining, it gives you some conceptual idea that could maybe help understand it too.
It really was good, because I like had no clue what, you know, what half of this stuff meant, and when she went through that, it was really like, you know, like light bulbs, like, oh, 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 okay, I get it. That's, you know, that's where this is going and why, whatever. So it was really helpful.
Vicki, how was that shared out? Was it in a meeting, or what, how she do that?
It was actually, I think, through, the public was even invited, from what I remember. But we all, and I can't remember, we had something first, and then the public was invited, but.
No, so what it was, is that we had, it was right, it was right before, it was when we were doing our building studies and stuff, so I wanna say fourteen, fifteen. And what it was, is that WASBO, the business organization, she went and got trained on it. Now, I wouldn't talk to her, but if they could, if they have something like that, because that would be a great thing, that you could open up the community and learn with the community, and especially, I think with, when we look at referendums, we look at all this other information, it'd be great for the more people want to know why we're doing what we're doing, this would be a great opportunity.
I'll work with Maria and talk about potential opportunities for making that happen, but I do like the idea of like opening up for committee members too, to be able to walk through. I'll work with Maria and talk about potential opportunities for making that happen, but I do like the idea of, like, opening up for committee members too, to be able to walk through it, so they have a better awareness, especially when going through this referendum. Um, the more knowledge, the better they understand the story, so.
All right. Matt, you, under the superintendent's part, Aaron's usually takes that and runs one run after another, but I can announce each of them.
No, it's okay, I can go right to the next, yeah, thanks, Steve. So the next one is the Welcome Back Plan and new website app alert system update. So I'm gonna say a few things and then, Aaron, you can go right on this, but it's, we're almost in August. It's exciting times, but yeah, and I think people were talking already, August third, where football's going and moving and, you know, just exciting to see that happening, you know, and the, the year getting going. But, uh, Aaron's, you know, put together some, you know, base as far as, like, what we're gonna be looking at for that Welcome Back for staff members. And he, uh, has created a website in the past, just so that, you know, people have an awareness of what's going on and communicating to educators, paraprofessionals, facilities, you name it, so they know what's gonna be happening in those first few days back. Uh, on the website, it's got the dates. I think we have our New Educator Day on the, the eighteenth of August, where we can, all new educators to the district get a chance to, like, get acclimated with who we are and what we're about. Um, and really get to work with their mentors or their pets, uh, and, uh, collaboration with them through that time, so it's a really great experience. And then that following, uh, Monday, which is the twenty-second, so we're gonna actually do our kickoff. We're gonna have breakfast as a full staff, as a district, and, uh, Dave's gonna make that happen, Julie, I think, and get that over to, uh, uh, the Friendship Learning Center and make that, or actually, we're all red, uh, we're a man, right?
We gotta change that, so make sure you do that.
Um, and, uh, then, you know, starting building meetings, but then throughout that time, we're gonna have the twenty-third Special Education Yale Day, uh, the twenty-fourth Building Days, the twenty-fifth Building Days, Friday, no contract. Then we come back the following work, a week, and we get the twenty-ninth as another training day, specific to training as far as district, as N B C I, uh, medical, CPR, you name it, those things, so that we get those mandated things done. And then Tuesday, the August thirtieth, will be another, uh, you know, workday for our staff, but it's also Welcome Back Night for our schools. So, you know, community members can come in, visit the schools, uh, get to know who their, you know, teachers and, you know, walk through hallways to get a better understanding of what's going on. And then Wednesday, no one's in the building, and then Thursday's first day of school. So, uh, I don't know if you wanna add anything more to that, Aaron, but like, that's base, the base of.
Yep, and then when Matt said Building Days, he's talking curriculum instruction, um, you know, per buildings, like with, with friendship lots, it has to do with bridges, the math curriculum and, and reading and, um, assessments. And Adam helps to drive a lot of those. Also, there's building meetings and there's different initiatives and things that the staff talks about at all different levels also.
Any questions about Welcome Back Plan or some of those things that are coming up with that?
Just seems weird to start school on Thursday.
Two days and then, oh, it's a weekend. Uh, Aaron's, um, advice, leaving right now. It used to be you needed special dispensation from the Pope, along with clerics from the Middle East, um, and then probably Gandhi relatives in order to start before the first of September. Now, we always, like, we, we did when we had the, uh, the, uh, the building, so when you make that schedule, you know, look at the building, because it might be pushed off a little longer to get some more work in the summer. Uh, but I've heard of districts right now that are writing that say, hey, we just, we'd like to start, you know, August twenty-third, because that's when we think it's best for our schools, and they're okaying them now. So just an F Y I, going forward, like you said, it's weird to start on a Thursday, why can't we on that Tuesday or Monday? It used to never be allowed, and that's the tourism, because of the tourist lobby about, you know, in Door County, about morsel of delves, but I'm starting to see a crack to that. But next year, depending on what happens with the referendum, that could have an impact on when we start. I think we don't start school until, like, the fifteenth or, or like second week in September, because getting more building time, more, maybe start earlier and then end earlier, so there's more building time in the summer of twenty-four, so there's a lot of things up in the air.
The other portion of that update was, uh, new website apps, other thing coming out August first, so that's scheduled to go through. Karen's been doing amazing work with that, and I know Aaron's been part of that as well, but it's a big push out to really, uh, make our, uh, information and our communication more efficient. So when people are on our sites or on our apps, uh, it flows better for everyone, and it's easier for them not to get frustrated and trying to find, you know, hundreds of things. Obviously, we're gonna have things right away where people are gonna point out, like, oh, can you do this, that? And we're gonna have the flexibility to do that, but the presentation itself, I think, is gonna allow, uh, our, our families, our community, our, you know, who are looking at this from all over the place, to have a better, quick access to, you know, who we are and what we're about. If you wanna add anything on that?
Yeah, the final thing I'll add too is Welcome Back, said one place that I would go, and Matt's gonna send something out to all the staff about this site, is Meet the New Orioles. So as you go on here, you can see all the changes at each one of the schools and who's new. Then you can click on it, Kristen Knight, uh, she's coming back, so you can learn a little bit about her and see her family and stuff. So if you wanna know a little bit about the changes that have gone on in our district, um, you can see all that here, and you can see all these are new people. Each one of the new people, once they're hired, they have their own webpage that you can go to, you could be like F L C, quite a few changes. So this is a good place to get all that information from. And then, um, uh, and then this half two needs to, this is some compliance stuff that we do, uh, for H R and also that for safety. Um, and then as Matt had said, uh, what's another really cool thing is that, um, as we're going and making our website and app, we have now really formatted what the Oriole looks like, what the official colors are, what the, um, the dimensions, you know, if you bring it, make it bigger, smaller, and also font. So that's gonna be something that any, any youth sport, anybody who wants to get an Oriole to put on anything, they'll have that. It'll be in a spot and it'll be dressed right, dressed as they say in the military or, or formatted and, uh, refreshed.
And obviously, that's important for branding, uh, so that we can, it's the same symbol, so when we are walking around, it's like Packers jersey, people know that, that's Green Bay Packers, just like, they're, you know, they're North Pole Black. And I really like the logo that we have, so it's great. Uh, next, any other questions about that? Yes, okay, great. Uh, next, future board items, special board meeting, we, we talked about that, we alluded to that before. Um, coming back on the fifteenth with more information about the referendum and being able to sit down and, and talk through, I think, more of that educational proposal and what that looks like too, Rick, so we can share that out as well. Okay. Uh, other announcements? So, uh, one of the things. All right. Yeah, so other announcements, uh, one of the things that we're looking at, uh, as we're finishing up hiring here at the, uh, middle of summer, almost the start of the school year, uh, one of the things that we're looking at is, uh, some positions and seeing how can we make them more efficient? And one of them happens to be, uh, the, uh, Activities Director, Athletic Director slash Dean. And what we've noticed, uh, throughout the years that that's been in place, there's been a, a little bit of turnover in that area, but also, um, we're seeing, uh, a, a point where, you know, how does that all fit together when you've got a role where you're doing behavior all day and then trying to get to the level athletics to best make and create that sense of belonging for all of our students? And so we're looking at ways with that position to almost, like, break those apart and think about, like, how can we find a way to have an Activities Director? So K twelve, meaning, meaning, uh, a degree of creating a sense of belonging for all of our kids from elementary through the high school level, so that they have a chance to get connected, to feel a sense of belonging in the school, which would increase academic engagement, because they wanna be there and be part of it. So I think that's a, a very major play within this whole arena. The other thing is, it also allows, you know, for our Activities Director to focus on being at the events, promoting coaches, promoting club leaders, creating more universal platforms, so that everybody's on that same page to build those programs up, and including getting students involved in the leadership processes. You know, so that they feel a part and they can own some of this as well. I think systems-wide, uh, by putting a position by itself as an Activities Director will allow more of those things to happen, as well as build our programs indefinitely. And getting students who might not be in part of, uh, those areas right now in, involved earlier on, so that we can see, uh, more of that, you know, sense of belonging, like I said before, early on, so they can continue that throughout the whole thing. The other thing is that this person would also be, um, available to help out with instructional practices, in terms of evaluations and working with probably our fine arts or encore people and other individuals, so that they can best, uh, work that through. So we wanna post that position separate from the Dean position, and then have a halftime Dean position or greater, so we can meet the needs of the behaviors and the attendance zones. So we're looking to do that very shortly. I just wanted to bring it up to you, I'm gonna share more information in the update at the end of this week, but we wanna post it out soon, so we can get the right individuals into those spots. We also feel confident that with that role, we might attract more individuals into that position because of, you know, what it, what it brings and how it brings. And my hope is that it sustains and we keep someone in there three to five years, so we can really start building, rather than, you know, the revolving door that we've had for the last couple of years, for whatever reason, to build programs. So just a little update there, we're, we're gonna be moving more on that, I don't know, Aaron?
Yeah, so a couple of things, so process-wise, that I told Matt, is when he's looking at creating positions, we're doing something different. The practice hasn't been that he asks the board, um, what do you think about? You know, that he doesn't, he, he doesn't come to have you approve the position at the time he's looking at. He gives you feedback, we need this, this is what we're gonna do, this is what I'm looking for, does anybody have feedback on there? He'll develop the job description, you'll get that this week, an update, um, and like you said, get it posted. You know, it's like, look, talking with Matt and Matt's experience at East and, um, you know, and in Green Bay, at both East, Green Bay East and, uh, Appleton East, that sense of belonging, and we've seen that. We haven't had sustainable, like, the sports and, and activities, they've done a great job, the people have done it, really tried and done well. But we also have a lot of staff that is disengaged from coaching, they were coaching but aren't anymore, and I think a lot of that might have to do with having that support. That administrative and academic, that support all the time from during the day and after the day. I think that would be huge, and I really commend Matt of saying, okay, you know, if we keep doing the things over and over the same way and expect a different result, that's called insanity. So I'm, I'm really excited about what this could be and what this could bring. Um, so, uh, you know, there could be a cost, it, that'll work with Maria, but that'll be worked in the budget. So the two things, number one, just this process of, of how he brings things, how I have in the past, and the board might wanna talk with Matt about what that looks like later, but this is the way I would do things, so that when you would vote, like, on the twenty-second on this person, it's not a surprise, but by you voting to approve this person, you're like, okay, that's cool, and move forward with it. So I think there's a lot of upside, and one of the other things that I think is really great, as Matt's looking at this, is explain who they would report to, who this person would, this person reports to me. Uh, and because it's K twelve, so that we can, you know, I can mentor, support and build the systems with them in those programs across our, our whole school district.
It, it sounds, sounds really a good idea, and I think we can add to both areas. One question I would have was about the part-time position. Would that be filled with somebody who is gonna split it with their current duties? Or if we look outside, is that half the position gonna keep somebody here a while?
So historically, in some other school districts, what's happened is either, you know, in a part-time being a point five or a point eight, you know, either a teacher would take a portion of that and then their, the rest of their contract would be kicked out, or it would be like halftime back and forth. Eventually, I'd like to have a full-time Dean as well, just to be able to handle, but we just, again, looking at our financials and, and being physically responsible, how do we make that happen so that we can really start working on that attendance and behaviors and really helping that six-twelve, uh, for the principals to be able to do other things in terms of instructional practice in the morning, uh, within their days?
The Activities Director, that's full-time?
Correct. Full-time being.
And then what you're saying, Matt, too, is it's not just the sporting events, it's all areas outside of the classroom.
So co-curriculars in general, so, I mean, drama, clubs, um, getting students starting out early, or even that elementary or the middle school level and building some of those programs. So those, those students feel connected, and, and one of the, the research says is that if students feel like, you know, they've got a place to be and part of it, you're gonna see some academic success with them as well. Now, will it completely shift the, the, you know, not necessarily, but it will get that rolling towards that where kids wanna be at school. Bless you.
And one thing that, uh, just to point out with my view with them, you look at the middle one, high school principal, their focus becomes more than on academics, a part of the classroom teacher, and then academics of helping to build the capacity of the teacher. So it's really helps in, in a lot of different ways to, to really, our main job here is to help kids learn and be prepared for after high school. And how you do that? Well, get kids involved in many different things, build that capacity, and have people can focus on that, so. You know, I'm really excited, I'm excited to see what can happen, because we haven't tried something different in a while. We've been trying to go with the model that we have, and, and we've done okay, but we can, I think this could really help maybe make things much better.
All right.
All right.
Anything else? All right, on to new business. Um, item one, discuss and consider resignations of staff.
Do we have any resignations of staff at this time?
That's, that's good.
Yeah.
Uh, number two, discuss and consider educator contracts for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
So yes, we are. That was divided also for you, the human resources part. There was one addition, and that was, uh, Stacy. Well, Jennifer Rodamacher, and the reason I'm taking over, I gotta tell you, the way that he's allowed me to still help, I know that can kind of be difficult sometimes, but the amount of trust, um, that he's given me, um, I, I told him, I said, boy, I'd love to work for you at some time, if things work out right. Uh, but he, he was meeting with people, figuring out where he's, what's going on, and, and I said, hey, we got people we're hiring, and he goes, you just keep doing it. Let me know when things are going on, let's just keep going, because he wants to get things rock and roll, and so I really appreciate that. Um, so you can see Jennifer Rodamacher, Sierra Sergeant, and, and Matt, you met Sierra, have you seen anybody that jacked up to be a teacher?
She was, she was very excited to be part of our, our world, our team, and it, it's just, it's a wonderful, you can see the passion at that level, and I'm so excited for those students that they'll get that experience, um, because that passion will drive and those kids will be initiated from, from her, from her world, her energy, so very cool stuff.
And then Caitlin Emo, like, and, and Matt's also gonna, he sent, or he sent you the, uh, stuff, because we just got that all together, uh, Stacy. So you've gotten all this other information, but, uh, now our third Emil, Caitlin Emil, who's not related to Ramsey or Ramsey's sister-in-law that we hired, um, at the elementary school, um, she actually started, she got three thousand dollars in scholarships. And then you guys know, like, table pond where, where, where we have the Midwest Fleeter Supply, there's that gas station, they also have, like, a broad hamburger stand over there. She got those three thousand dollars, and what she did is when she got into college, she developed her own foundation to raise money to get scholarships for kids by selling Bronson burgers. So pretty neat, she's got a pretty neat story. She's a Lion alumni, so she was really excited about the smaller, uh, schools. Um, then Sean Basmer, um, you might know the Goldobskis, Cindy and John, Jenna, their daughter, that's Jenna's husband. Matter of fact, I think they're just close, so they own the house now, probably, you guys might, down there. So he's all excited, he was working, um, moving around quite a bit in Beaver Dam, I believe, so he's all excited. And I tell you, Matt Yacke's really excited to have another male at F L C, so that's, that's kind of exciting, so, um, and then you had Stacy, so she was on there also. Oh, and one other thing, yep, so there has been, and I was gonna bring this up before, and, uh, uh, so it's been very, I don't like saying trust to staff when you hire them, because inherently, it's the board's decision to approve a contract, all right? And somebody can only be under one contract at one time under state statute and education. Many school districts, including Oshkosh, it wouldn't have to be anything formal, it would just be that you would allow Matt the authority, and I was gonna ask for this. Normally, when we, we, we would have a special board meeting, right? Like, hey, can, can I get at least three together at five o'clock on Thursday so we can approve them, right? What has happened is that the board, since we've, since I've been here, the board has never not approved a contract that I have brought to, a professional contract. It's allowable, if you would, if you want, you would still approve them at the end, but let's say with all these staff members, if Matt has authority to know that the board, you know, if there's any issues or anything, he'll send someone, he doesn't get anything back, good to go. Um, not that we would have a quorum or anything, or walk in, you're not voting, he's not asking for a vote, just ask if anybody's got issues. He can then say, hey, Sarah, you're at the job, we can get your contract going, and you're gonna be in, it'll be official then, but we can get the ball rolling. We could say to one of these staff members, they had to get out of, they had to resign by June thirtieth, because if they went beyond June thirtieth, it would have been a thousand dollar contract breakage fee. So they resigned, now they're waiting for tonight to get hired, so inherently, they don't have a contract, which is kind of unsettling to me, if you will. But if you allow Matt when he offers a contract, because the staff members and administrators who, they, whoever the direct supervisor goes through the whole process recommends to me, or at, or this time, Matt, if you give him the authority, then he could say, yeah, you're locked in, the board will prove it, you don't need a special board meeting, but that person would have a contract, then they wouldn't be left out. But that person would have a contract, then they wouldn't be left out, if that makes sense.
Well, it makes sense from the standpoint is they're probably, if they're valuable enough that we're gonna hire them, they're probably interviewing other places, could get offers other places. Maybe jump the gun and say, well, I'd rather be in North Bonneville, but like, here's, you know, one in the hand or whatever. And that gives them that commitment from us right away, too, then.
And that happens often.
And right now, especially now, like when you would get, so all of a sudden, you've got like Pat Goldbe, you get to three, you gotta be the ranger of Winnicott. I mean, if we can get some, and then the board doesn't have to worry about coming back to a board meeting, knowing what the past practice would be, knowing how we do our hiring processes, um, that we would, that Matt would still bring all these contracts to you. But inherently, when he offers a job, the district is giving, the board is giving him the authority that that is a binding contract by his honor. And if that's something that I, I would highly recommend, if I was here, that, uh, you know, I think Matt, if he has that, that would give him, then he doesn't have to say, trust me. He doesn't have to say to somebody, you should be fine. I'm 99.9% sure the board's gonna be okay with you, you know, hang out there for 30, you know, 20 days and not know. And it's really hard to get people together. And I don't, I didn't like sometimes where you only get like two or like three or four board members for somebody to wanna be there. This would eliminate having to have those in between. Now, if it was a big position, let's say it was a, a, a principal position or something like that, then maybe that would be different. But I would say for, uh, the positions, even the activities director right now, I mean, they might interview next, get it posted, close it, interview Friday, find somebody. Um, I mean, and that could be put on, uh, the, the fif, the 15th, if that's the one that would be, you could put it on there. But so I guess what I'm asking, not a vote, but if you guys, I think Matt, to have the authority that when he offers a job, it's, it's binding with that person. Comments?
Well, I'm fine with that. We've always had an element of trust with the, the administrators that they're bringing somebody to us that they feel, and in most cases, they're very excited about the finding this person. And I, you know, and, and in some strange set of circumstances, we might know something about somebody that we would wanna discuss. And, you know, I think, uh, even if you notify us, that, you know, that you, but not necessarily have to have us commit a vote. I'm fine with that.
I think it creates the experience we should be having for someone welcoming to the Oriole family. So I don't think they, it breaks my heart. So I think it's probably the right thing, in my opinion, for us to do, not only to what Steve said with the trust, but also what a great first step to be able to welcome them and take that worry off their shoulders. So.
And it, it expedites, like, tomorrow, Matt's gonna send up welcome emails, and I've kind of shown what I did to like four staff members who've already, who've offered the job the past three weeks, where that could have already been going, you know? So I, I, and I've never, and I, and I think, I'm just knowing Matt briefly, you know, the superintendent serves at the, at the pleasure of the board. So when you get these abilities to do these things, that you do them and you do them well. So I think that by doing this, especially now in today's market and in, you know, in, in summer, I think it makes a lot of sense.
I mean, do we wanna, I mean, in the meantime, I would say, yeah, go ahead, but to make it a formal thing, you wanna, I'd recommend a policy at the next board meeting. Where we vote, so it's an official policy. In the meantime, go ahead and do it. But I think we, it's better to have a formal policy.
I, I don't, I think you just, yeah, the motion. So you can write that up as a new business. That's a great idea.
Okay. So we need, um, we have the list. Um, anyone want me to go through them again real quick? Stacy Castine, Jennifer Rodemaker, Sierra Sergeant, Caitlin Emo, and Sean Bensler. As educators, so. And I'll entertain a motion to approve those contracts.
Second.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Before we move on to the next one, I, just a quick question. Where are we at as far as overall vacancies? Teachers?
We're doing pretty good. Um, right now, it's the, the position Matt was talking about. Uh, we started looking for FIET, high school FIET. Um, now, after tonight, it'll be the assistant principal at Friendship. Um, but other than that, I think we're.
And I know the FIET, they were interviewing this morning and they've gone through that. So I think they're already doing reference checks and that's on its way, according to Samantha.
Which would be perfect for what we just talked about allowing Matt to do, because then they could get on board right away.
That's all.
Yeah. Okay. And a roll call?
Goldobski, yes. Jaeger.
Yes.
Gekerman.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
Puck.
Yes. Okay. Item three, discuss and consider 4K partnership agreements and leases for Avocap and Arts for Kids.
Pretty much, these are every year. Uh, one is for the lease of the building. Uh, Avocap has two rooms plus some common areas. Arts for Kids has, have good ones for, Arts for Kids has like eight rooms and some other areas. Nothing has changed there. Contract is the same. We've increased 5% their monthly rent. That's all. And then the 4K, the reimbursement for each student's the same. Um, all the other stuff's the same. There's no difference. And then we have a new person at Avocap, so that name was changed. And these are out July. Normally, I'd get them till September, so I had some time to focus. Got Matt set up for success.
All right. Okay, the motion to approve the partnership agreements and leases. Second. And a roll call?
Matthew.
Yes.
Puck.
Yes.
Goldobski, yes. Jaeger.
Yes.
Gekerman.
Yeah.
Carrie. Um, item four, discuss and consider employment guide revisions for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Yeah, I'll turn some over to you, too. The, the guides are in their final phases, which, and I think you've all seen, these are had time to review them. It's more, we feel like we get in a pretty good spot right now, but we wanna move them forward so that we can get them to our appropriate staff members and let them know where we're at again. So I don't know, Aaron, if you want any more on that?
You guys had to give me feedback, uh, really took to heed, uh, the board, when we have big things, especially with new members, get that information out sooner. Um, so we got some good feedback, answered questions, really no real big changes. The, the number one change, and you're gonna see the different nuances, that everything isn't the same, because an educator is different than an administrator, which is different than an hourly wage. There's a lot of similarities in there. Uh, the one thing that I very much recommend is working on our, uh, retirement benefit for educators. It says it sunsets in 2025. Um, I think working with, uh, with Matt and Maria, figuring out to, to, it's a very affordable and it really honors our, our staff that has left, that has been here that long. But you might wanna look at maybe changing it to any who hires. And Maria's gonna be looking at this, saying, a lot of schools now are doing 403Bs. So you come in, you're hired, you get so much per month in a 403B, and then after five years, you're vested. Which means that if you leave, you can take it with you. But if you leave before that, you lose that money. Um, and then the, the staff members that right now are looking at that amount for retirement, for HRA, for insurance, um, they could still count on that. So I think that it's, that we, that, this was one of the critical things before Act 10 that made our district, I think, really sore. We came to this agreement before Act 10, helped us out with our whole PEP liabilities and, uh, really well. But I would say that's something Maria, uh, and Matt worked with. Um, I know that there's some staff that are planning on retiring in 2026, and they're like, hey, it says it. Is that gonna happen? And I, the intent wasn't ever that it was going to. It's just that it should be looked at to see what the future looks like. So I would say that once Maria and Matt look at that, that, that could be addressed at the next addition of the, um, the guide, or as I told Matt, one of the unfinished things was to look at and refine that educator compensation schedule and what that looks like. So that could be a, a look at there, too. So I think the message to the staff, anybody watching, or as Matt goes through and talk with the board, that the intent isn't to take it away from employees that we have. Not right now. It's just we have to see what the future would look like. You know, with new hires or just recently hired people, that it wouldn't impact, because people right now aren't thinking 15, 20 years in the future.
Yeah. And if I could just say, I just start, the sunset is just like you said, an outgrowth of the union days when we had to negotiate. So it was put in there to protect the board's position if need be. And that's been advanced periodically to keep that going. So it's, it's really an arbitrary date. And I think we could do without that, you know, um, as long as it's laid out as to, you know, the current employees that are grandfathered in, new employees may, you know, and that'll be for next year. But as Maria studies that and brings us information on how to do retirement, um, we'll get that figured out. But it does create anxiety, because I hear that from retirees that are off in mourning, all their veteran teachers here, oh, you know, that, that might not be there. When you better retire soon and those kinds of things. So, um, it just clarifies and clears up the whole thing. So. All right. Um, so any other discussion on the employment guide revisions? Vote. All right. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the employment guide. Uh, approving, uh, we're approving the employment guides with revisions as presented for the 2022, 2023 school year.
I'll second.
All right. Roll call?
Puck.
Yes.
Gekerman.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
Goldobski, yes. Jaeger.
Yes.
Okay. Item five, discuss and consider extra duty letters of assignment.
There's only one?
Well, one, two, two more. I think I have two, three, a mentor, a pet. Remember, a pet is a peer educational teammate. So kind of a teacher's pet, right? But a mentor, so the difference, a mentor gets paid about $700, $750 a year. And it's a newer teacher, like Sierra Sergeant, love Julia Lightery as the mentor, and they go through training. So there'll be more things, not just about getting used to and understanding Oriole Nation, but also understanding what it is to be an educator. And then a, a peer educational teammate would be like for, um, Rodemacher, who's been teaching for 20 years. They don't need as much support, except for how, what Oriole Nation's all about. So that's the difference.
Do we have the names or the?
Yes, I put them on your.
Is there three mentors? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's under the, in your packet.
I'll do the one.
The middle, page one.
All right. Oh, okay. All right. So then, um, again, I'll entertain a motion to approve the extra duty letters of assignment for Julia.
Lightery.
Lightery, Jim Knowlton and Gene Hints.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? And roll call?
Jaeger.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
Puck.
Yes.
Goldobski, yes. Gekerman.
Yes.
All right. Item six, discuss and consider designating hazardous transportation plan.
So pretty much, this is something we, so about five years ago, we have, um, we have Lakeside Terrace and Gaslight Terrace. Uh, over in that area, we have quite a few children, quite a few children. But by state law, you don't have to transport or you won't get reimbursed any money if you have somebody within two miles of school. We already have one of these up by Margels. So if you go, go pass on Margels on 175 or RP, that's designated a danger zone, because it's a highway hours, a kid gonna get here, they should be bussed, because even though it's less than two miles there. When we look at Gaslight Terrace and, um, and Lakeside Terrace, they, these, we don't, first off, double O or triple O, what is it? Double, Winnebago, Winnebago. So Winnebago, that's probably one of the busiest streets coming in. And then you have our only intersectional stoplights right there, where we have RP, which is another one of the busiest streets. We don't, we can't get a crossing guard. We have the Schulz, and since they retired, we can't find somebody to be a crossing guard. So anybody coming from that area has to navigate those two streets. To have the county sheriff, Florida, have the police department monitor those areas all the time in the morning isn't feasible, because at most, we have two people on patrol in the morning, and it's just not feasible. We've been doing this and we, and I would recommend keep doing it. Those are our largest routes. We have a lot of families, uh, Hispanic families and also families that, you know, have two parents working, so they don't have the ability, the kids would have to walk. So really, what this process is, is the board approves, if you could see, and you could read the narrative of what it was, then there's this picture. After the board approves, what happened is Matt would send it to the county sheriff, to Ryan, our sheriff Ryan, and then also to, uh, to Darren, the chief pouch. And they'd look at it and see if there's a problem or anything. They're saying, no, we can patrol them, or no, we can do this, which I don't think they're gonna see an issue or problem with these. Then they're okay with them. Then Matt sends it down to DPI, and then they evaluate. If they approve it, we get $15 per kid. Uh, about 15 bucks per kid in that area. I don't know if that's 100, 200 kids. Currently, right now, we run a route. We roll double routes in the morning and in the afternoon for elementary and secondary. Um, so let's say there's a possibility of 100 or 200 kids living in that area, could be a possible $3,000. So it's not gonna save us a ton of money, but it does get a little bit back. Um, and it's the right, it's the right thing to run those routes, even though we weren't getting reimbursed before. Um, I think when we look at equity and equal opportunity for kids, those are, those kids' transportation, especially with RP and with, uh, Winnebago, running that bus route is, is, I think, the right thing to do. So this is just approving this plan, saying, yep, we think this. Then it would go to the sheriffs and the, uh, NFT LPD, then it goes to DPI. DPI says, okay, then we're good.
A quick question, are, are these, like, in the past, we had pickup points at entrances, or are they gonna actually drive through?
No. So what are we doing here? So when you, actually, this is one of my routes. So when you go in, you go down, um, you go down Winnebago, take a left by the boat with the boulevard, right there, you go into that area. And then you go probably to about the second intersection, you stop, and that's where you pick up and drop off Lakeside. Then you go through that area, get back on a cross, go past Dollar General, take a right, go into Gaslight Terrace, and then take that first left. And that's where there's like a big area where the bus then pulls over, and that's where all the parents are there. So it's to that one spot. So buses don't drive through the whole area, but it's safe to get into those two areas. That, and it's amazing, when you go drop off, especially the elementary, how many people are there to pick up their kids?
All right. And, and this is just formalizing it so we can get the A, because again, we've done that at both places, as long as I can remember, for, just because it was the right thing to do. So, okay.
Have we ever broke it down to, I mean, just how much it costs for us to do that?
Um, we could get that all across. And I, I'm not, I don't have that on the top of my, but yeah, we could. One of the main reasons we started doing this, we saw, sold, we saw some attendance problems with kids, especially our Hispanic students, because their parents were both working. It was bad weather, and you have, you have a five-year-old, think about, you have a five and a six-year-old having to walk from Gaslight. I mean, it's just, especially with those two roads. So, yeah. We've been, this has been in our budget for the past six, seven years. It's just that this time, I think, it's, I should get this done, so we're getting it done. Don't wanna pass stuff off to the new guy.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the hazardous transportation plan. Any further discussion, questions?
Oh, it's just a horrible name. I mean, I get it, but.
Hazardous. Useful hazard.
Transporting hazardous material?
Summar behavior, yes.
Puck.
Yes.
Hey.
Yes.
Goldobski, yes. Jaeger.
Yes.
Gekerman.
Yes.
Motion approved. And number seven, discuss and consider authorizing Oriole Nation to display sponsorship banners on school grounds.
So our buddy Wayne Weber from Laconia calls and says, hey, we're looking at doing sponsorship. Sent it to me and some other people, hey, do you have any policies or how do you go about doing that? And I'm like, I bet we do. So went on Board Docs, typed in sponsorship, boom. I wanna thank the district on behalf of Oriole Nation for allowing us to have these banners up over the past years. And also allowing our scoreboard to have sponsorships on without having direct board approval. So make hope, but I'm looking at this, I thought, well, now that I know, um, what the motion would be is to allow Oriole Nation to continue to do what it's doing. Now, as much as like Badger, Licker, Margels might be big sponsors, we can't hang their posters. We get it. They understand that, too. Uh, but what it would be is that Oriole Nation can still hang the sponsorship posters, as long as they're approved by the superintendent.
Any other discussion? Motion, somebody?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. And then roll call?
I'm sorry, who's second? I can never tell the two apart. I'm sorry.
They look similar.
Voices.
You shouldn't be too happy about that.
It's a hard time telling voices. All right, Gekerman.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
Puck.
Yes.
Podolski, yes.
All right, and then before entertaining a motion to go to closed session, I'm gonna take a moment to recognize Aaron's last official meeting as superintendent. Um, I'd like to make a few comments. I guess I've been with you all 16 years, uh, you've been here, never a dull moment, I might say. I, um, you know, we've been through a lot. Um, you always talk about doing what's right and what's right for kids. And I always appreciated that in your style. Um, you know, you'll do, you do anything for people. And I just thought of an example of, one day we were talking outside the door here. Car pulled up and, uh, that lady got out, was, had her back door open. Aaron, you're right in the middle of the sentence, ran out of the car, you know, helped her, got her, whatever it was that she was trying to pull out of there and helped her into the building. That's just the kind of guy you are. Um, I, I think that's, uh, indicative of the way you approach life and superintendent here. I, again, with going to schools with my job, I see a lot of superintendents, a lot of them know Aaron or have heard of them. I always like to joke that he's a man of 100 ideas and 10 of them or so are often very good ideas. The point being that you're always thinking of how can we improve? How can we do better? And, and that's another thing I appreciate. Um, the change here that's happened over, the difference in my career, 28, almost 29 years now as a school board member has just been tremendous. And, uh, they got, always recognize that we have stuff to work at and work on. Um, but, um, I couldn't have dreamt where we're at right now, facility-wise, staff-wise, and the quality of staff and the desirability of people to move here because they can't get in on open enrollment and pay, you know, thousands of dollars more than asking price on homes just so they can send their kids to school here, which has been verified by the real estate people that sell houses out, out here, so. Um, I guess, and the last that I have is, Kancha is a great friend, Aaron. Uh, and thank you for all you've done for Oriole Nation. So good luck to you in your future endeavor. And maybe that, um, little thing you got at South Hills can, um, come our way here once in a while. But thanks, Aaron.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate it. And I'll just add, um, there's no, when I met Kelly Byrne from Michigan Avidum, I had never come to Northon Lake much. I remember I applied for the high school principalship, and I got the nicest rejection letter from Dr. Sue McFarland, says if there's ever another open guy. Dave Manley retired. Lo and behold, I hadn't in because my buddy gets superintendentcy jobs, so I was hired as a bestial principal. As you could say, the rest is history. Um, this has been one of my favorite things that I've ever done in my life. Um, I've always had a dream to make a difference. And my mindset has always been, it's not gonna be me, it's gonna be my kids. And to have Paige, Lily, and Ethan go through this, to be part of so many different things. And they always say the number one thing, a precursor of greatness is past greatness. There was a lot of great things here in Northon Lake, but together, all of us, our children, our community, we built something pretty special. And, um, we've said this before, you know, Oriole Nation has caught on and wants an Oriole, always an Oriole, and I will always be an Oriole. Thank you guys for allowing me the honor to serve this community. And, hey, we got a lot ahead of us. And I was really excited for Matt. Um, I'm really excited for the staff. Um, I don't wanna like him as much as I do. And, um, I feel really good right now leaving this position, knowing that the board we have right now, Matt and the staff is here. So on behalf of myself and my family, thank you for the most wonderful 16 professional years I could have.
All right, so then I'll entertain a motion to move to closed session to discuss an administrative contract for Friendship Learning Center principal under state statute 19251C.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And roll call.
I'll find one of these.
Gekerman. Yes. Podolski, yes. Jaeger.
Yes.[1772.91]